Let's start with the roll call.
Councilman Papeski. Mayor Potembry-Duper.
President.
Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
Councilman Daley is absent. There is a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Daley was due to perform the invocation and pledge of allegiance, so I will substitute. Please rise.
Dear Lord, we thank you once again for your leadership of our community, your presence, your influence. We'd like to tap into that tonight as we make decisions regarding our community. They could have better. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We would like to pull number three and reschedule for the next city council meeting, and also number six, which that item require Councilman Daley to be here.
Number five and number six?
Just six.
Number three and number six.
Five and six?
No.
Five and six have different people that were previously assigned to it, and Councilman Daley was not involved in decision of item five, so we can continue with that.
Okay.
Okay. Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Since item six isn't on the agenda, you're talking about that?
Yeah, I am.
Some of us are conflicted, so we can't do much about it. I'm not sure we can even hear about it.
These are two buildings with the same issue.
Yeah. It's that conflict thing. I don't know what...
Just had to speak up.
Is it time-sensitive?
We would start tomorrow if it were approved tonight. Contract's already ready to go.
Okay, then I think... Is it time-sensitive in that it delays anything else?
Just the identification for our patients.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney, can we redraw for this particular?
Okay, then I think maybe what we need to talk about is, is this part of the project or is this part of something that is glued onto the project but is not the project?
We've previously had a policy that where a particular project comes forward, everything related to that project would stay with the same three council members rather than redrawing straws repeatedly. So to be consistent, my recommendation would be to stay with that policy on both these items where we've previously already determined the participants. I was just inquiring of staff, they would certainly have no objection to some temporary sign to meet the needs for the next couple of weeks.
But is this... Well, let me just say for discussion purposes, let's say that a company had multiple parking garages and wanted to do a wayfinding solution that involved the parking garages. Does it... Is it a parking garage project or is it a wayfinding project? That, to me, is the hinging concept.
Well, the wayfinding is item number one, which is not on for action tonight.
But this...
It's just a report.
I don't know what these projects are about, but he just said they're signs.
Yes, one of those projects...
So signs are usually...
Item five, we will be handling tonight, and if it's very similar or arguably identical type project, then that certainly would give an indication or level of comfort.
That's the context of my request, because we're going to be dealing with signs. We've got a presentation for you. It's all really one matter, different applications of the same plan. So you've caught it.
Final action, though, on the one where we are lacking a quorum for that item, will have to take place at the next meeting then.
But I'll repeat my question. Is this two parking garage projects or is this a sign project that happens to be glued onto two parking garages? And if it were, would that be a separate straw draw? I just...
Well, their agenda is separately with reference to individual project or buildings. It's a policy matter.
What does staff think? I mean, is this a separate project that just happens to be attached to two parking garages?
Conrad's indicating they're two separate signed permits for those individual buildings.
Okay, so we treat them as part of the building, as a matter of just that's the way we do things?
The condition of approval for each of those buildings, as I recall, has a requirement to come back for approval of signs.
Okay. So it sounds to me like, and I'm just guessing, that you approve one, don't approve the other, they both wait.
I don't know about that.
Why would you do that? I bet it's the same contractor.
Well, he's going to have to work on one and not the other, assuming that it passes. But the other concern that I have is that I understand that we've set precedent of having to keep the same straws. The challenge is that in setting up that precedent, anytime someone's missing, it delays a project longer and longer. So I think there's got to be some way of perhaps not delaying things simply because someone's not able to be here.
Well, there's another...
Especially since we have four people here.
There's another problem. When we draw straws, let's say for item... Let's say there was item number six and a half that was another university project. We would... All three of us would draw straws, and if we got the two vote straws, fine, we'd go ahead. If only one of us got a vote straw and the missing party got the other vote straw, we couldn't do that either.
Correct. Councilman Daley would have to have equal chance of participating, again, in the redrawing of straws, and there is case law that says an absence is not sufficient grounds to invoke the rule of necessity to draw straws. So if somebody is not conflicted, there's case law that says you can't draw straws in his absence to fill in for that person. And since we've already drawn straws and he is no longer prohibited from participating, it's almost a circumvention of that rule if we were to redraw and keep drawing until he doesn't win.
But yet, there is enough... Who are the folks involved in number five?
You and I and Duper.
Okay, and that we can...
Oh, it's not you. It's John. You're out.
So we can move on that, according to the city attorney?
Yes, number five, we can move on.
Just wanted to make it clear, it's two separate contractors, so one can proceed without the other. It's really the benefit of our patients being able to identify where they're to park.
Okay. And which one is the patient parking lot? Six.
Six is patient.
Okay. And five is the employee parking lot? Well, that's a little bit backwards, but we have to do what we have to do. So is there any other comment from the public on any non-agendized item? Hearing none, then we'll move to item number one. We have a presentation by Curtis Sharp of LLU regarding wayfinding, and we have a comment from the attorney before we start.
I'm sorry to have to make these comments tonight, but this is the environment we have. This item will be coming back before us for formal action in the future, and at that time, we will need to draw straws again because of these previously declared conflicts of interest. But since it's not on for action tonight, I would defer the drawing of straws. The presentation can go forward. However, I would caution against any comments or questions that would indicate a preference, a like or a dislike. We, in effect, need to be circumspect until the item comes before you for action and we determine who will be participating.
I would like to repeat the essence of what you said for my colleagues who are possibly on their phones. The comment is... I'm sure you did. Everybody's good at multitasking. But the point is, we can listen, but we can't beat up the project until we draw straws.
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
One of my concerns is that, back to the rule of necessities and the fact that everybody has a chance, draw straw, why does that rule not apply to any other projects? It almost seems like maybe every project that comes before us, every applicant should have the opportunity to listen to everybody on the council. So it's almost as if the quorum no longer becomes an issue. I mean, if you can use the same rule saying you all have to draw... Have an opportunity to draw straws, then you can take another step further and say you all have to have an opportunity to listen on any project, and if you're not that... You don't have that opportunity, then the applicant cannot... I'm talking about any other project, cannot listen, cannot present themselves without everybody being here. That's the reason why we have quorums. So I'm still having a hard time why we cannot draw straws, simply because everybody's not here.
Well, I don't make those rules. I just try to report them and assist in complying. The issue of drawing straws is a way around a lack of a quorum that is created by multiple conflicts of interest that have been declared by individual council members due to employment or source of income involving the university or the medical center. So once conflicts occur and we lose a quorum that can act, the rule of necessity allows us to bring in a conflicted member to fill in one of those necessary seats in order for the council to take action. But it's a limited rule of necessity. It only allows, to the extent absolutely necessary, to obtain a quorum that can then act on the matter. So we unfortunately are bound by case law and state law and opinions of the Attorney General and so forth, and we have to be somewhat circumspect in the way we comply with those rules to protect the council members, number one, but also to protect the applicant against any claim that their approval might be invalid due to the presence on the council of a conflict of interest.
Well, I would still like to see if the rule does say that everybody has to be present in order to draw straws, so...
They don't have to be physically present. They just have to have an opportunity. In other words, we could draw straws tonight and somebody could draw one for Councilman Daley, or he could have the last one that's left. But if he wins, in effect, and has chosen to participate, then we're not allowed to go forward in his absence again. The rule is that an absence is not grounds for replacing somebody who is not otherwise qualified to participate.
Well, I still would like to see the rule on paper.
Well, when it has case law, it's going to be a sheaf of paper that I don't think you'll want to go through. Okay, item number one, proceed with your presentation. You've heard the ground rules.
How do you activate the PowerPoint? Okay. I'll pass up. Thank you. While they're setting that up, I'll give you a little intro into what we're talking about this evening. Loma Linda University Health recognized back in 2013 that the overall ... They needed a overall wayfinding logic strategy.
Can you pull the thing down there?
Sure. Is that better? Better. So they came up with a wayfinding logic strategy between 2013 and 2014. And during that time, we created a standard sign program, and we presented it to staff and provided them some information on how we can assist the community in arrival sequence of signs that not only help people get to Loma Linda University Health, but also to City Hall and the VA. Knowing that we've got, you know, maybe 50,000 cars a day traveling through the city, that we wanted to provide proper signage in order to get motorists to their proper end destination so that they felt like they had a really good experience coming into this town. We also think it's important, knowing that the VA is a very large presence as Loma Linda University Health, that by putting proper signage on the roads, that people would be able to identify where they needed to go, because it could be very confusing having two hospitals within one community within a mile from one another. So we came up with a number of signs, which we call an arrival sequence for inbound motorists in order to safely get them where they need to go. So we have a PowerPoint presentation here that talks about arrival sequence signs. One, kind of an intro sign, kind of like what we have where we have the Loma Linda City Monument sign. What that does is it's showing the different logos of the main players, that being the VA, Loma Linda University Health, and the city, as kind of starting the arrival sequence process as you move into town. And at that point, we have over-the-road signs, kind of like we'd have maybe over at Disneyland, which direct traffic up major roadways, that being Anderson and Barton Road, both going east and west. And the thought was, is that we want to be able to segregate traffic, get them in the right lanes, and get them up to the right roads in order to safely get them to where they need to go. We presented this to staff a few years... A couple of years back, and it's been presented to the VA, but at that time, they didn't have somebody working on this full-time. And I was hired about four months ago to try to implement this program, and since then, I've been working closely with Jarb and Conrad in putting what we consider a collaborative effort together in order to be able to build signs on public right-of-way. And so as soon as we have the presentation going, I'll kind of roll through the sequence of signs. We've got different things that help create kind of an intuitive sense of where you are. We've incorporated public art into the signs, so a certain area might have more of a medical theme, whereas over in the VA area or near City Hall, we might have more of a national theme with the public art. And we're also working with colors, whereas if we're over in the Loma Linda University area, we would have gray and red incorporated into the signs, because those are our colors versus the VA, which has blue. So there's art, intuitive indicators that we would add in those arrival sequence signs in order for people to kind of have a sense of where they're at as they're traveling through the city. So, oh, here we go. We've got the presentation right here, so... Oh, got it, okay. All right. So as I'd mentioned earlier, the goal is to create a sense of arrival within a community and provide efficiency in intuitively moving people safely to primary endpoints destinations within the city. So we're proposing that we incorporate public art into the arrival sequence, which I'll explain as we get to the photos. We'll talk about logo displays on the arrival sequence signs, and also, as I'd mentioned before, colors being intuitive indicators of where you are. These are symbols showing on the map the type of signs that we're talking about. So we're going to talk about threshold signs, what are introduction signs, leading into the arrival sequence. We've got over-the-road signs, which are directional signs. Gateway signs are signs that are incorporated into the traffic signals. They're just to help guide people along the way. And then we have large and small vehicular signs, which gets people to more specific destinations as they get closer to where they're supposed to be. So this is a legend, and you can see the arrival sequence map up in the right-hand corner there. And as I go to the next slide, you can see that this is the arrival sequence that I've been talking about. You've got southbound Anderson, and then the loop going around University Campus. You've got Barton Road going east and Barton Road going west. And I've kind of defined the arrival sequence in color, so you can see where the VA and City Hall is over in the blue area, and then we've got Loma Linda University Health in red. So this is an example of our first sign. And talking about logo and public art, you can see where we have the two symbols in red. Those are in the Loma Linda area, and these... How I've got them color-coded also kind of just defines how we would probably sequence the logos on the signs. So if you go to the next sign, you'll see that we have... Or the next slide, we have the city logo at the top, Loma Linda University in the center, that being that if we're over in more our area of town, that we would take the center spot and the VA below. But if we were over off of Mountain View, we would switch spots with the VA and Loma Linda University Health, just based on locations. We're trying to incorporate public art into the arrival sequence signs, so I had our marketing department come up with some renditions here. What we would like to do is come up with a number of public art renditions and then bring them over to the Public Arts Beautification Committee with the city and have them make the final selection on the type of public art that would be used for that specific sign. Gateway element signs are signage that's incorporated into traffic signals. This kind of goes back to what I was talking about earlier. The perforated metal, which is over the signal arm, is blue here because that would be intuitive for the VA area if we happen to be over in... Oh, thank you. Thanks. Okay. So as I'd mentioned here, this blue here, if we happen to be over in the university campus area, that would be a regent red. Oops. Let's see if... For some reason, the... There we go. Slide wasn't working. And on the back side of the sign, we would put some type of public art. This would be over in the VA area. We put a rippling flag in there as an example. But if it happened to be over on the university side, we probably would go with something that was a little bit more medical-oriented, or possibly that associating with the university. These are the over-the-road destination signs. So these sign types are used to quickly queue up and orient large number of vehicles entering a district or community. Same concept here with using color schemes and public art in order to identify where the motorist is located and where they need to go. And here's actually a mock-up that we did on South Anderson before Stewart Street.
Can I add that they will replace the banner and electronic sign will be underneath?
Yes. So on these over-the-road signs, there is an electronic messaging board at the very bottom, so we could actually use that to give information if there happens to be a detour, or if there's something going on with the roads. We could also communicate public events on those signs, whether it be the city, the VA, or Loma Linda University Health, so that can be kind of a shared LED board for everybody to use. There are six of these over-the-road directional signs between Anderson and Barton Road, so this would be a good way of communicating public events. Or, like I said, if there happens to be a detour or a road hazard, or if we need to provide emergency information, these LEDs could be used for that as well. This would be an example of the back of the sign incorporating public art, trying to associate with where you are in the arrival sequence, whether you'd be on Anderson Road or Barton Road. What we have here are vehicular directional signs, so as you get closer to your endpoint destination, you're going to need a little bit more specific information, so these signs will direct traffic towards the center of activity. And as you see, this is more focused on the campus area. The larger icons are the larger vehicular signs, whereas the smaller ones are on smaller streets. And here's an illustration of the vehicular signs showing going to an emergency room. It could be going to a parking structure. It could be directing somebody up the road to Barton Road in order to continue on that arrival sequence to get to City Hall or the VA. So the whole point here is to try to provide good direction on our major roads in order to get people where they need to go. I also had banners on there, but I don't see that on this slide. But it's in the handout that you have. Banner signs? We had a sequence of... Yeah, so you must have an older version. Okay, I guess it's missing. Yeah, that's okay. Trying to get back to the beginning here. So what we would like to do is, I know this is informational, but what we'd like to do is if there's an interest here, we would hope that we can work with staff in moving forward on writing code towards these arrival sequence signs within the next couple of months, and eventually get to a point where we could come back to city council and have a proposal reviewed as far as moving forward with the project. Do you have anything that you can add to that, Jarb?
The... One other thing that we talk about is, because we have to include a city sign, the city logo onto this monument, and the city will help financing this monument by using the funding from the... On the public place. So that was my plan, to help utilize this sign and help put it in some direction to the City Hall or senior center and so forth, so.
How much is currently in that fund?
I don't know. So... We should get quite a bit when the hospital is done, so... Into it, but that's the whole idea. And I have been... We have a schedule to meet with the representative from the VA hospital to see if they can contribute some money toward... To have their sign and directional to the existing hospital and the new clinics on Redlands Boulevard.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I'm still not clear. Your over-road sign, the directional one?
Yes.
Are those just solid, or are they electronic that can change?
Actually, on the panels themselves, they are stationary. They're stagnant signs. They have a reflective property, so that you can see them at night. The part that's LED, which can change, is at the very bottom of the sign. There's a six-inch band at the very bottom of the sign where you can have a rolling message.
And those are on which ones? The road signs or the...
Those would be on the over-the-road signs.
Over-the-road signs?
Over-the-road signs.
Okay. Okay. It just is not clear. Do you...
We, we paid a consultant to help design, and so we have, we have designs with dimensions and all that, but I don't have anything that's been physically built. Because they specifically designed these for Loma Linda University Health.
I see.
And then, in, in speaking with staff, they had an interest in adopting the architecture of, of some of these signs. That's why we, we put the city logo on the sign cabinet for the gateway signs, which are at the traffic signals, because there's a possibility that you may build more of these throughout the city. So, that, that's why we made this collaborative effort of, of trying to figure out where logos could, should go versus public art, and we've kind of done a balance of that based on staff's interest in adopting the architectural design of these signs for different areas in the city.
Well, there's no doubt about it. Having good signs does help everybody find their way, especially if you're new to town. I know that I, I, I'm involved with the airport, and our signage is not very good. It's hard to tell where to go, when to turn, even though, you know, folks are accustomed to it. It's always, you know, as places move and locations change, it's good to be able to inform everybody where everything else. So, some sort of sign is something that's good for the community, so... Thank you.
Yeah, that was a generic comment about signs.
Yes. I thought so.
Anybody else have any questions, or...
We can't ask much. So, thank you for your, for your presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Your presentation was, was aesthetically appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is a public hearing, Council Bill R-2016-28, about our spring...
Is it weed abatement?
Weed. We had a big weed sale. Every year, every year, the fire marshal tells us whose weeds he whacked and how much he's going to charge them for it.
Twice a year. Twice a year. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. The background on this is through the International Fire Code, Section 304, adopted and amended by Loma Linda Municipal Code 15.28. It establishes the authority to remove combustible vegetation when it is deemed a fire hazard. So, basically, we went out, starting March 15th, was the initial inspection. We inspected approximately 440 parcels. In pursuit to Sections 104 dot 5 of the International Fire Code, we found that 246 notices to clean the property is what we developed, and that's Exhibit A in, in your report there. They were sent out on March 28th to the owners of record provided by the Samuel County Observer's Office. We started follow-up, excuse me, follow-up inspections on April 18th, 2016. If abatements had not been accomplished, or extensions hadn't been asked for within that period of time, then the parcels were placed on the abatement list, and that abatement list went to our, the contractor that the city has to do the abatement work, to remove the combustible vegetation and hazards. In that list, from the 440 and the 246 notices, we came to 60 parcels that the city needed to do some abatement on. On June 21st, 2016, Exhibit B, we sent out notices that the work was performed by the contractor, and the notices included the, the cost of the, of doing the abatement, and the administrative fees for those owners of record that had not paid, you know, to get the properties cleaned. So, of that 60, we now have, on Exhibit C, we have a list of 23 people that have not paid for, for the abatement, and that was as of 5:00 this evening. So, what we're asking, or the recommendation, is that the council receive the report of the spring 2016 weed abatement program, approve the report and the accounting costs, and adopt the accompanying resolution establishing liens and assessments on those properties. So, I'm here to take any questions, if you have any.
I just noticed the list gets smaller every year, so that's progress.
And we've got a significant fire season, as everybody is well aware, with the drought. So, Jim's been on top of this. He gets, he's very into this weed abatement stuff, so he's been all over it, and he's worked with the contractors, he's worked with the property owners to try and get, you know, alleviate as much, you know, of the combustible materials as possible.
If all 8,000 parcels had this problem, we would make $800,000 in administrative fee. So, why is this progress?
Because we're finding out that only a few are left that are willing to have the city do it for them. They're obviously cleaning their own properties.
Yeah. But as we've noted before, the prices, even with a $100 fee, are very low. I've, I've mentioned every time, I went out there, and I think I gave myself permanent lung disease with silicosis, weed-whacking my dirt lot, and getting it all in my nose and all this stuff. And, you know, if I had known it would be $100 bucks, I wouldn't let you do it the whole time. So, I, I think it's a very good service that you provide, as well as, as making the, the town a safer place. So, that's my comment.
No, I appreciate that.
We can have the public comment now. I'll open the public hearing. Come forward, all who choose to speak on this topic. Hmm. Okay. I'll close it out. And what's the pleasure of the council with the request of the fire department?
I'll go ahead and move Council Bill R-2016-28.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That appears to have passed unanimously, so you have your permission to proceed. Okay. Item number three, public hearing has been pulled because it's not yet ripe for consideration. Item number four was deleted. Item number five is before us, and I believe Councilman Popescu needs to go to the back He was previously conflicted out of this discussion, and as was...
Ovi.
Did we get it wrong?
No, that's the list I got.
So, bring Ovi back, and Mr. Lenart must exit. If you left, we would still have a quorum, but I'm not, that's not permission.
Sorry.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, we can't consider it until you're gone. He was previously convicted, not convicted, conflicted out, conflicted out on this, on this item, and it's back for more consideration with the same people. So, proceed with your presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, this is a variant 16-056 relating to signage on the parking structure. It's called PS2, the one on Campus Street directly across from the Medical Center. So, the variance involves installing four signs that exceed the maximum number of signs per, sorry, the maximum number of signs and the allowable square footage. The municipal code is, is written for typical, normal-sized commercial building. This is a fairly substantial building with a lot of surface, and requires something that's a bit more, a bit larger than the typical 100-foot allowed signage. So, what we're looking at is one 247-plus-square-foot wall sign to include the institution's name and logo, and then three additional wayfinding signs identifying functions relating to the operation of the structure. This is all relating to Section 1718150 of the municipal code, which relates to signs and the square footage of the signs. Site is what we call PS2, kind of directly across from the emergency room, the, the new parking structure there. Existing use, it's a parking structure, general plans healthcare, and it's zoned institutional. You can kind of see from a top view where these signs will be. This, that CL1 is a large sign that will be up along the top of the building, and then 2, 3, and 4 will be on the street facing it. So, we are looking at CL1, up there at the top, the institution's logo, and it didn't come out real well, but the, the white lettering up against the, the signage, and then the, the three smaller signs identifying ancillary uses associated with the building. That's, that's what we're looking at for the big sign up on top, and then the small ones that are down below. So, when the building was built, it did not have any exterior signage. They're typically used for wayfinding, getting people into the right place, and also to be able to get people into the, the security services and the other activities happening there downstairs, at the bottom of the building. Staff is supportive of the variance. We feel that the signage is proportional to the size of the building, and doesn't really stand out or create any type of visual impairment, and is appropriately scaled for the mass of, of the side of that building. These are additional, just for information. These are other signs that we've approved over the last couple of years with variances for size that will allow that, for relative size in the area or their approval. This is exempt from SEQA. And I think that's it. Oops. There it is. So, we recommend approval based upon the, the size and the massing of the building, and with approval, the applicant will file a notice of exemption with the county. Any questions?
I have a question for the applicant. How is a, an uninformed, never-been-here-before patient supposed to know that P2 parking is for employees and not for patients? There's a circle, blue circle with P2 parking. I'm sure that fits some master plan, this is a P2 parking lot. I would think it would say employee parking.
Yeah. Across the street, we have, at, at the one that's going to be next month, it says patient and visitors parking.
But someone will drive by this building on their way to that if they're coming from the freeway.
Yes. And I think part of the thought in that was, because I've, I've spoke with the parking director, and that some of the parking could shift to where some of that, some of the levels on Parking Structure 2 could actually become public parking at some point. So, it could just be that they didn't want to specifically define that, knowing that we had the patient and visitors parking structure across the street that was clearly defined as, as that.
Yeah. I just hope that whoever plans that in the future realizes that when people come in, they go, "Well, there's a parking garage, let's go in there." And, and they'll get in, and then there'll be a sign at the gate where they pull their little tag out, you know, their little ticket, and it says, you know, "You're ineligible to be here," and then they have to back out, and it just doesn't make sense.
And I understand what you're saying. We, we, well, and, and part of what I proposed earlier when we talked about the arrival sequence signs, we will have vehicular signs that, monument signs that are at the corner of the streets, and, and so, as, as we move up towards the parking structure, we'll have additional signage to support where to go.
So, there'll be a monument saying, "Patient parking ahead, employee parking to the right," in, in parking lot P2.
Exactly.
Okay. Then my question is answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant or staff? If not, then I'll start the public hearing with the official hammer. Would the public like to speak on this project? I don't see anybody jumping up. Okay? Then we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council on P, oh, variant 16-056?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three ayes, that's unanimous vote. You have your variance.
Thank you.
For item number five. Item number six has been pulled for lack of quorum, and we will have Councilman Lenart come back in.
Dusty?
Well, item number six, are we going to continue that to the next meeting?
Oh, we have to do some, so we can do that in our conflictual status? Okay.
Could, could I ask?
Yes.
Could I have Curtis explain just a little bit more about how we'll distinguish parking? I think he could tell you a little more.
Okay. Sure. This is back to item five.
Yeah, we're working with the School of Public Health in creating a GIS map. So, we're going to actually have a parking map available online, and it will have clear information of where people could park. So, so if you happen to be someone going into a public event at the university, the parking director will be adding information within that website, which will state where you can park. So, like over at Shepperson's Lot off of Stewart Street, that could become public parking during the day versus another lot, depending on where those public lots are, so, for, for events. So, we do have some technology apps that we're developing that will also help give people direction. So, the whole intent there is that people will, will look at that before they even drive to the campus and have a general idea where they're going, and then the signs just reinforce where they're supposed to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, we need to move item six to a future date certain... Yeah, our next meeting is August 9th, so you need that in the form of a motion?
So, we'll make the motion to move it?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to move it back to August 9th.
I'll second it, just to make sure that everybody who's involved in that is here.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. That is unanimous, so it's moved to August 9th, and we'll see you back. And some of us will see you make the same presentation from the other side of the wall. Okay. Very extensive.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay. Pull them, just discuss them now.
Okay. Number 13, the strain, the storm drain, is that the improvement that we believe is going to help alleviate some of the potential flooding?
Yes. This is the storm drain that, that, the, the, take the water that comes down Benton Street. It used to turn and go to the open ditch behind the Drexel Center, and come across the, the pipe at Van Louven.
Correct.
And when it overflowed, it overflowed into the Almond Digna Park. So, the whole idea is to extend the storm drain pipe at the end of Benton, go underneath the railroad track. Go underneath the railroad track. Come out into the, uh.
The main channel.
The, the apartment, proposed apartment complex on the south side of Van Louven, and go all the way to the channel.
I see, okay.
Now, there will be, there, there's still going to be existing V-ditch along the, the south side railroad track. But the majority will go straight into the channel.
Do we have any plan on making that ditch, uh, I don't know how you call it, when you cement it, you basically fill it in?
No, it's going to be a lot less flow after you put the storm drain in.
Yeah, because the problem is that ditch is full of trees.
Yes, and, and we have been asking, uh, the railroad to give us permission to go in there and, and trim and remove a lot of trees and they're not responding.
It seems like it takes a lot of effort to clean that up.
Yes, yes.
It took six years to get this project going.
Yes.
That's typical for railroad.
Well, anyway, all right, very good. And then, um, item number eighteen.
Uh, these are the folks, Conrad, that made the presentation to us, correct?
For the website?
Uh, no, no, number eighteen is IT support services?
Oh, eighteen, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still, we're, we're finishing up the negotiation with that, but we need IT services for the next, um, month or so to carry us through until they take over.
Okay.
This is appropriation for that.
And when do you anticipate that, that agreement with them will come in front of us?
We would like to be done sometime mid-August, so.
Okay.
In the next four to six weeks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other, under, any other items for discussion? I would like to comment that item thirteen-C, gopher prevention services, if they're successful, they may actually get, uh, some business from me as well. Because I've had no luck with my gopher service. So where are the gophers, on this property?
At all the city parks.
Okay.
Did a catch and a release program.
Yeah, this is. Yeah, right, they release them on the west side of town.
It is fairly expensive, sixteen thousand dollars for gophers, that's a lot.
Well.
All the city parks and the city hall, yes.
Bill Murray doesn't come cheap. Okay.
You want to entertain a motion?
Yes.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, that is unanimous, the entire consent calendar is approved as proposed. Item number twenty, appropriate almost seven-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, for the sheriff's contract. City manager.
As, and as, as an abundance of caution, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from this, uh, particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a little bit of background, at the, uh, the June twenty-first, uh, city council meeting, the city council did approve to, uh, to increase additional, uh, deputy services for eighteen hours a day, seven days a week, to be serviced at the Loma Linda Hospital. So, and, and at, at a cost of nine-hundred and, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-five dollars a year. Last week, Captain Steve Darcy, Lieutenant Roberto Romele, and myself met with, uh, the hospital CEO Kelly Hydrus-Rich. And we went over, uh, how the deputy going to patrol the, the hospital. And it was very productive meeting, and Steve Darcy and his crew ready to start the operation this coming April first. So, the cost of six-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-dollar is for the eleven months that we'll be in operation. So we need to appropriate the money, uh, from, from the saving into the expenditure account. And then we can start sending the bill to the, uh, the hospitals to pay for this bill.
Is it August first?
August first.
Okay, so that's ten months. No way.
No, eleven.
Eleven months. I miscalculated. Okay. I just, you know, it, eleven-twelfths of nine-twenty-three is not six-eighty-seven, I'm wondering where the discount came from. I'm happy with it, you don't have to, if, if explaining it makes it go away.
Which do you prefer, sir?
They gave us the, the schedule eight.
Prorated everything.
Okay.
From the vehicle to the equipment, everything is prorated.
Questions, clarification?
We can, however, add my fees, which are not in there.
This item is, is separate because it passed after the budget?
Correct.
So next year is just going to be included in the budget?
Correct.
With the overall police force?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Has this been before the budget committee?
No.
Okay, since it's a pass-through. Well, it's not a pass-through, it's not a pass-through. So it probably should go to the budget committee, but they can look at it in arrears, I think they have a.
We have, we have meeting tomorrow, so.
They have a meeting very soon, so.
Tomorrow, I can mention it to them.
Wave it under their noses, yes, I think that would be helpful.
Yes. Okay, and then the city attorney will be working on the agreement and bring it back later, at a later date.
So, uh, any other questions of the city manager?
So just to make sure I'm clear, this is an agreement that was made between us and the university.
No, no, sir, this is agreement between the city and the county sheriff.
I see. And as far as the bill to the university, where's that reflected in here?
That there will be a separate agreement that will come back to you.
Completely separate and not, not, not. And when will that come in front of us?
Hopefully next meeting.
I see, okay, all right. Very good, thank you.
Yes, because, uh, the hospital really would like to move on this, uh, police services, so we thank you to, to Captain Darcy. He can find two deputies and then start working this in two weeks.
And I, I'm assuming that since we're moving forward with this, and that would apply for the one officer, the other two that we appropriated with our budget are gonna, already coming on board?
Yes, they started July first.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And you have enough officers to staff this massive expansion?
We are cloning them rapidly.
Because this, this item is for three FTEs, which is a lot.
Yes, sir. We are going to make it happen.
Much appreciated. Okay, so what's your pleasure?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there further discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes, pass it unanimously, and Mr. Duper can come back, Mr. Mayor Protem. It's lonely back there, isn't it? Okay, item number twenty-one, designate voting delegate and alternate for League of Cities Annual Conference, October five through seven, Long Beach.
Yes, this is our, not our, is, is a league annual conference, and this year will be in Long Beach on October fifth to, to October seventh. And, uh, we need somebody to be there and help vote for a couple of items.
I, I will already be there, and I, and I believe I just can confirm to a voting position for the league chapter. So it might not be a bad idea for another one of us to go, I don't know if Jarb might want to go.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I will be there.
I have never been to a league event, what days of the week?
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
I, I want to. Actually, I think I would like to go to this one.
Then, go ahead. I, I would need to point out that I attended it, uh, gosh, uh, two thousand and nine, so it would have been seven years ago. And what was interesting was, at that conference, I ended up attending a reception put together by the folks who build parking garages. And they were talking about the various types of parking garage, I remember passing that information on to the university. Never envisioned that, seven years later, we would have three fully large parking garages built so quickly. Anyway, yeah, it's a good conference, it's a good opportunity to network with many other cities.
And my going doesn't prevent you, because you're paid for by the league?
Well, I'm, I'm not paid for by the league, however, um, but I'm going as the league vice, vice president of our chapter. So, kind of in a different role, and, and I think it would be a good idea, um, however, the city will have to pay for both of us. That brings up a point, and I wanted to, I wanted, before I forget, see if maybe Pam can start working on reservations for us, then if we're going to go. Because I know they're going to fill up pretty quickly.
Do we need a motion, or is this just a consensus item?
I think it's just a directional item to staff, usually.
It's a designation, so.
You know, you could always make the reservations yourself and just send them the bill.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'll probably forget.
I think we should carpool. So it has hotel, or is it, is this daily?
Long Beach is not far.
No, there, there's, there are a few host hotels, and the recommendation is to, to stay because there are events that occur in the evening and things like that, and that we don't have to drive back and forth.
And it takes about.
I know that when I went, I went for one date, and I drove with Dennis, and we drove back the same night.
We're, we're lu, we're lucky, it's supposed to move every other year between northern and southern California, but, um, northern California always seems to get more venue time than we do, but.
So you, you'd be a voting delegate then?
For the city?
I say we make, uh, the mayor, the voting delegate, and then.
Because he's there in another capacity.
I'll be voting in another capacity, and that way, we have, we have double the amount of shares.
That way will outweigh Los Angeles.
Now, are we, are we making sure that it's not going to affect anything with any of our council meetings?
It's the first, it would be the first, and, and it's Wednesday anyway, so it's not a problem.
Oh, five through seven.
I will have to, um, um, have a very nice breakfast, because October five is my anniversary.
I have to bring your wife with you.
Perhaps you two could share as many expenses as possible. Car, hotel rooms, food.
I'm not going out on his anniversary dinner with him.
Okay, so it doesn't require an official vote?
The league rules do require, uh, amended action, and then the clerk can fill out a form reflecting that.
Okay, so it requires a, a motion?
A vote.
Okay, I move that we send Mr. Duper, Mr. Riggsby to the League of Cities Annual Conference.
And I'll be the voting delegate, he'll be the alternate.
Correct. I'll say.
Okay, that's a motion, second, further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, it's unanimous, that's approved. Reports of councilmen, I have a report, and this is a celebration. I got a letter from the Government Finance Officers Association, Dear Mayor Riggsby, we are pleased to notify that your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand and fifteen, qualifies for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And the, the applause goes to Diana Deenda.
You're getting credit for someone else's work.
Our finance director. Yeah, the letter was pleased to announce me, that Diana is wonderful.
You already knew that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just, I, I know I wasn't here in May, but I'm not sure, Conrad, did you introduce your new colleague to us? Oh, okay.
Okay, any other councilmen reports?
The last League of Cities meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we had a presentation, uh, by Supervisor Josie Gonzalez on, um, on her homeless advocate committee, uh, project that she's got going on. And it was actually, um, um, very informative, we walked away with some information, and I thought it might be a, a good thing for us to connect some of our community partners with her. And she actually thought that would be a great idea also, um, to, uh, work on some of our, some of the issues that we've been seeing pop up around town. So I'm just, I'll try to dig through my email and forward you that stuff.
I have a couple items.
Go ahead.
Um, a few, couple city councils ago, I brought up the story of a friend of mine who was walking and found water spewing everywhere, and he didn't know who to report it to. And we talked about maybe putting something on the website so they could do it, and I notice that hasn't done yet, is this part of the website thing that we're going to work on?
Yes, that's what you, you just did.
Because it was the same guy, saw the exact same one going again, and he was frustrated, and I said, well, go on there.
Same one going again, just fix that.
Well, he didn't see you out there, I guess, I don't know.
Does it have any copper?
I, I, how about, I give you a flag, the, the, the blue flag that I've been carrying around with me.
I can just give your phone over, I'll do that.
Perfect.
Save me the trouble. And secondly, um, I walk my dog every night, and it's in the night, and I keep getting poked in the eyes by low-lying branches. Is the parking strips, are those responsible to the city or the homeowners? You know, trees that are in the parking strip, so you have your, you have your house, then you have your sidewalk, and then there's a parking strip with trees. And all these trees have really low hanging, I mean, they're hanging like this high off the ground, you can't walk without getting poked in the eye. Is that homeowner's responsibility, or is that city responsibility?
It, it's a homeowner's responsibility to maintain the, the trees and, and lawn turf in front of their house.
If, if councilman.
A lot of time, it's the trees the city will trim the two, so.
If Councilman Lenart went out with shears and trimmed them, would the homeowner have a cause of action against him? Or would he be acting on behalf of the city as a concerned citizen?
Email me and I'll fix it. See, we, we just plant a lot, replace our trees in front of people's house, but what we usually do is, we send them a letter first. Let them know that, yes, we can be planting the trees, the city trees, i- in their front yard, in the, in the parkway area, which, which is, which is the, the city right of way.
So it's the homeowner's responsibility.
But the homeowner see how to water it and maintain it.
But they need trimming.
But my question of maybe the city attorney, who's busy marking something. Would it be within the rights of a concerned citizen to trim dangerous limbs from public right-of-way trees dangling in the pedestrian right-of-way?
I, I prefer that the city staff would do it, or contractor from city, because I, I don't want the homeowner to fight one another's.
Yeah, but if they don't, you know, if you put a sack over your head.
Well, however it's done, I've, I've just seen multiple places throughout the city, there's low-lying branches everywhere, there was one I had to drive around, my car wouldn't even go under it.
And.
And, and that kind of thing, so I just think it's kind of getting overgrown all over the place, and I, because just kind of driving around and looked to see if it was other places beside my neighborhood, it seems like it's kind of that. So it needs to be looked into, whoever does it needs to do it.
And to tie item K in with item two. The weeds on the lot across from my house dangling, are dangling out into the road and could cause some impact. We actually have weeds that are big enough that they hang out in the road, so, on our own property.
On our own property, okay.
It's city property, so, just for example. Okay, any reports of officers?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Lorena Matarita, she is our new crack planning staff. Our old planner Guillermo went to work at the city of Downey, so now he'll be wa, uh, walking to work instead of two-hour commuting. Uh, Lorena comes to us from the county, where she did a couple of years, uh, as a planner there, and has a master's degree in planning from Cal Poly Pomona. And has hit the ground running, and, um, it's, it's been a pleasure working with her for the last eight days or whatever, but we'll break, we'll break her in right.
We wish you well, Guillermo did a great job, um, particularly, I noticed that he was very good at drafting language. So I'm, I'm happy to hear you have a master's degree, and I'm sure you're, you're going to just really put him to shame.
You're going to make Conrad look good.
Okay, welcome. Any other reports of officers?
Okay, then. Just want to, general comment, not that anybody's really watching, but just want to encourage everybody to spend their money in Loma Linda. And it means anything from not going to buy stuff outside of town and try to buy it in town, anything from groceries to gasoline, to computers.
Restaurants.
Yeah, restaurants, um, unfortunately, the bookstore doesn't sell iPhones, but they just sell laptops and iPads. But, anyway, we had a budget that's kind of in a deficit, and, uh, the more sales tax we can generate within the city, the better off we will be, so, just general announcement.
Okay, then the city council agenda is adjourned, and we'll move to our housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any non-agendized items, meaning anything in the world other than the demands register in the minutes of June fourteen? No comment. Then we have our consent calendar. What is your pleasure?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that's approved. Opposed, no, that's approved unanimously. Any chair member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none, we're adjourned. The next agenda is the successor agency to the Loma Linda redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agendized items? Hearing none, the consent calendar has the Demands Register and the minutes of June fourteen. The appropriate motion would be approve the consent calendar.
I'll make it.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
There's a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, that's approved, we are adjourned, and that's the last of our agendas.
Housekeeping item.
Okay, one, one item. Go ahead.
In the past, when the, we got notice of our agenda, we still get little attachments for each one, but then when we go to the website, uh, I'm having to go on to our regular website to get the agenda, and it only gives me the city council agenda, not the housing authority or the successor agency. So, I don't know if we need to fix something, so when I download it, includes all of them? I guess in the past, you guys had it all combined on that other website, okay, okay. So, we're fixing it at some point where it's all together, or?
Apple can't handle it?
Okay, that would help.
Apple can't handle it?
No, it's, it's probably a Microsoft issue, that's why.
Okay. Okay, thank you all for coming, and sorry I have to come twice, some of you. Full employment.